Yeah, that was awesome. That was one of the best tours.
I'm doing wonderful.
Hey, you got a haircut.
You know, the other gal who did the conference.
There's about five up there that cut all of them.
Our past president.
Said you got a haircut and I said he cut them all.
Okay, we're almost done. I gotta get in my reading mode, huh?
He forgot.
Been like this since November, October.
I hate to go in that role.
It looks different to me. I noticed a little bit of hairstyle.
I've been like this since October.
Yes, really. Put some Johnson's wax on there.
Not yet. That's next.
My good friend.
That's only for the pictures.
My friend could go south or scan cancer, you know, watch his head.
Good morning. This is the May tenth meeting of the Tulare County Planning Commission. I want to welcome you. And we'll start with roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Meili.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Weylach.
Here.
Patignano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Let's, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge to be just as unified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and everlasting.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission today. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. Is there anyone who would like to comment on something not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Over there.
My name is Merrily Reese. I'm at, live at three eight zero six seven Millwood Drive, Woodlake, California. And I'm here today to talk about the cell tower in Elderwood. And I, I think this issue may have been resolved since we were, I was here last, but I did make a short little presentation that I'd like to just quickly run through and, and, um, working with the staff, I think, I think a resolution may be at hand. But, um, when I, this was about the cell towers. And, um, when I came to the meeting last time, I, I didn't know about alternative towers. I mean, I'd sort of heard something vaguely about tree towers, but I didn't really understand it. And, um, the, I, I lived directly across the street from where the cell towers proposed in Elderwood. And I think I made comments about how it's going to, you know, permanently impact my view and the enjoyment of my property and so on. And after the meeting was over, I heard a discussion between John and the staff and whatnot about, oh yeah, there's a lot of different kinds of alternative towers and whatnot. And my jaw sort of hit the ground. It's like, well, why, why wasn't that an alternative that was presented? So I went home and of course I get online and I look at cell tree towers and it's like, huh, whoa. There's a lot of different t- tree towers for cell towers. There's pine trees, there's saguaro cactus, there's palm trees, there's all kinds of trees. And so I was like, well, how, how come that wasn't an alternative? I mean, I had talked about landscaping around the tanks at the bottom because I didn't really know that anything else was possible. So, um, the, the other thing that also occurred to me is, is, as I mentioned, I'm co-owner in the stables. That's right directly across the street from where the cell tower will be. And so we have some concerns about the construction because as you'll, as I'll show you in my slide demonstration, cranes and construction and equipment probably are not going to be a safe mix for small children taking riding lessons on ponies and horses. And so, you know, our, our primary interest is to coordinate that construction so we don't have any kind of permanent injuries or fatalities with a horse being spooked by a crane, you know, lifting a tower into place. So, um, so with that, I'd like to just sort of run through a, a quick PowerPoint to kind of again help describe it. And so, um, and with the planning staff kind of get a better understanding. Sorry. Now what do I do? I got the wrong one.
We'll watch that one too.
In, um, 2012, I don't know how to do this. In, in 2012, um, the property next to me, um, at three seven nine nine seven Millwood Drive went into foreclosure, well, probably before then. And, um, my sister and brother-in-law Chuck House, who's here today, um, we bought the property out of foreclosure. So, um, since that time, it has been weed by weed, junk pile by junk pile to convert this property into something that, oh, I get a little motion, we're, we're pretty proud of. So these are some of the scenes of when we first took it on, um, when we took it on and what it looks like today. This was the front arena. And this is what it looks like today. This is along Millwood Drive. And this is what it looks like today. This again is the front arena, looking east towards where the cell tower will be. And this is the front arena today. And, um, as you look at the end of the arena, you see kind of dead scent in the middle. There's a, a redwood tree there. So if everybody can sort of spot that redwood tree. And then in other pictures, always look at the redwood tree because the cell tower will be just to the right of that redwood tree. This is what the entrance looked like when we bought the property. This is the entrance today. And it's called Sequoia Hills Stables and we give riding lessons. Again, I'm kind of focused on that arena. But you can see the transformation and the program that we provide. And we provide lessons, we, we have grown this program student by student because we primarily teach English riding, we do teach Western riding, but there's a lot of people in Tulare County that teach Western riding. And we have found a niche in English riding and jumping and dressage. And so, um, it's kind of our own love and passion and it's our trainer's love and passion. In fact, our trainer is the one that first taught Lauren Billies how to ride. And Lauren Billies went to the Olympics last year, so.
Merrily, we're, we're, we know you've done an incredible thing out there. But can we get to the point on?
Yes, yes, okay.
Please.
So these pictures show the type of students and horses that we have in our program. Because this relates to my concerns about construction taking place, um, that's, that's not coordinated. So just show some of our ponies, horses. There's the redwood tree. There's the redwood tree. Students, 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 family, ponies, students, happy students, happy students, and happy students. Okay, the, at, at the last hearing, I, I mentioned that the company had forgot to include the, the view from my house. And so I just kind of wanted to show my house and then that will be the view back towards where the tower will be. The tower will be right here, right here. And right directly across the road here is the stables arena. So you can see tower here, arena here. So I'm just trying to show you this so my concerns about the construction and then of course the aesthetics of the tower. This is what is proposed. And these are alternative tree towers. And so you can see that obviously from aesthetics point of view, an alternative tree tower would be better than looking at the mono tower. So, um, I don't, um, I, I really, I thank you for your time today. I'm not really sure how, I, I know this is sort of out of step because their, their permit was approved. And then I, I was just informed this morning that, that, um, that it, an alternative, that a tree tower has been agreed to by the, the company. So I want to thank you for, I don't know how all that happened, but I want to thank you for that. And, um, so I guess the only other thing is just the construction to work out.
Well, the construction too isn't that long of a time. So I think basically if you communicate with the company, I think we can work that out so you don't have kids and.
Right.
You know, and stressed out horses during that because it is going to be a little bit disruptive for a few days.
Right. And we have summer camps, you know, the summer camps of all kids, kids of our, we have three weeks of summer camps and the kids have signed up. You know, we have people that have paid deposits and whatnot. So that's, those are kind of set dates. So, but I, and I don't, I don't know what their timeframe is. I don't know if they're doing it in June or July or August or October. I don't, I don't know what they're doing.
We'll check with our planning department. I'm sure they'll be on top of it.
Okay.
And thank you today for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on now to approval of minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the minute of, uh, the minutes on April twenty six seventeen.
A second. Oh, okay. Roll call?
Gong.
Yes.
Meili.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Weylach.
Yes.
Patignano.
Yes. Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we have an information and discussion, item four. That's the Tulare County Business Opportunities Work Program, Tourism Work Program and Film Commission Presentation. I guess this would be the appropriate time for that, so.
Thank you. Yeah, as our, uh, as we're doing more and more presenting to your planning commission, some of the programs we're working on in the county, we've had a ban of vehicles, employee housing, things like this. Just wanted to present you with the same update that we've given, given the board a couple of weeks ago regarding economic development. Basically, I'm not going to go through this in real fine detail. Prior to going to the board, I had conducted a leadership Tulare County Seminar Issue up in, in Dinuba. And I kind of talked about what economic development was. But I just, just kind of the goals that, uh, the main goal is to create economic development, well-being of the community through efforts that entail job creation, retention, tax base enhancements and the quality of life. In the broadest sense, economic development really barrels down to three major areas. Government on the federal level such as taxes, import, uh, importing and taxation, monetary and fiscal policy. That's really macro economics that we really don't have any say in at our level. And then the other areas, providing programs for, for providing infrastructure, which we do at this level provide, we get some state and federal funding where we're putting roads, bridges, sewers, water, sidewalks, et cetera. And then the other policy that's really down to the nitty gritty is improving the business climate, which we're really focused on at the RMA on the economic development side. Through land use, planning and, and those types of things which you have seen. So this will kind of go through that as what we've been doing. The general plan has a number of policies in our economic development element. And basically it's to maintain healthy, diverse economy, promote business growth and, and industrial diversification, to diversify the economic base, improve labor force preparedness, enhancement of the tourism opportunities in, in our county, and support downtowns, town center, neighborhood services. Basically what that's looking at is our hamlets, our communities to, to really focus on trying to get development in, in those areas. What we did, when, when we have this skeleton, so to speak, of, of, of what we're looking at generally, then we, we need to do this, a regional analysis to kind of say, how, how do we fit those goals and objectives from the general plan into what we're doing? So we have to look at our regional area and of course agriculture is our number one industry. And one thing there is that we have a higher percentage of Tulare County's gross domestic product is in agriculture than surrounding counties. Therefore ag is more important and we rely more on it in Tulare County than say Fresno or Kern or Kings because it's the higher percentage of what our overall GP, DP is. Our natural resources, you know, our county has a unique because of the sequoias and, and the Kings Canyon, so focus on that. The location is key, that we're centrally located, uh, we're the only place in California that's dead center. Pixie is really the dead center between the LA ports and the Oakland ports. So that's a key to, to, to go on. And then the workforce that we have a young, motivated, trainable workforce with a relatively low cost of labor. And then we have a major highway, north-south corridor, we have two mainline rails as, as well as a short line. So we need to focus on all those things as we, we put our economic development effort forward. So when it comes down to the Economic Development Office, the office is broken into three areas. Business Opportunities, Tourism and the Film Commission. This presentation is just really going to be talking mostly about the business opportunities. And that's, uh, and, and this is kind of like a table contents of the future slides here as, as how we've broken down, down what we do. We have a BARE program, which is an acronym for Business Expansion, Attraction and Retention Program. The program focuses on existing businesses because eighty percent of all growth in jobs is, is really coming from existing businesses. The key is to focus on, uh, those businesses that are already here and expanding and help them grow. Because that's where true job growth is. You can always shoot for that Toyota assembly plant or the Amazon curment center. And you can spend a lot of time, a lot of effort on that, but the likelihood of getting that is, is very small. So we, we do keep our eyes on that, but, but our focus is on growing our existing businesses. The BARE program also, we, we meet with ownership and decision makers at the companies. And what that does is provide an open communication between the county and the businesses. It might not be that they're ready to expand now, but we learn of, uh, issues that they might be, there might be something up in Sacramento that they're concerned about. It's about to be some sort of legislation that's being passed that they have concerns or issues with. That networking really gets us to be able to understand more what type of, uh, environment that they're facing or concerns about that. And then we might be able to address that. It's not just solely about expanding or growing or constructing additional buildings. So that's the big, the big push on that. And, and we've met with a number of our large employers in the county. I'm sorry, you can't really read this, but the Business Response Team, uh, it's a collaborative effort to have rapid and, um, substantive assistance to developers when they come in with a project. This photo here is where you're dealing with, um, foster farms. We can bring into the room, uh, our building department, public works, fire department, environmental health, get them all in one room at one time to be able to work with the developer and get these questions that they might have answered early in the process. This is key, you know, when we, when, often after we get out of these meetings, the developer's saying, oh, I really appreciate this because we're able to get all of our answers early at one spot. Whereas in other counties, they go, well, we met with the fire department today. Then they try to set up a meeting with the public works and they go cross-count another. We get it all, everybody in the room at one time, so we work these, these issues out right away. Because it's easy on a, on like a set of plans, it's easy to erase a line early on and change, tweak something because the public works needs a wider access or whatever, rather than going down the process and then having to make a change later in the process. So this, this is a, a very good effort that, that the county has been successful in the last four or five years. One of the sectors that we've focused on in economic development is the healthcare sector. During the last five, it's been five years since we've, uh, it was spring of two thousand and twelve when we created our own economic development office. And since then, we've brought in and assisted five community healthcare centers. And there's four more on the horizon right now. We're working in Strathmore for reconfiguring an office, building into, in converting it to a medical clinic in Pixie. Springville is looking at expanding their Sierra Care at the lake. And then Tipton is also looking at an expansion in their medical facility. One thing I like to highlight is the Family Healthcare Networks, the two projects there. Terabella, we had to do a rezone for that. We did the rezone. The, the thing was, the push here was there was money available to build, uh, there's grant money available to build medical clinics. But they had a very tight deadline on getting them, uh, getting the money. They had to be open by, by a very close window. In Terabella, we had to do a zone change. They, they came in in, uh, in July. And they needed to be, have their doors open and seeing patients by December. And they were able to do that. We did the zone change in fifty-nine days, thanks to your commission as, as part of that approval process. So that was fantastic. We, we, we condensed when they do the building permit review, the same time as we're processing the land entitlements. But then when we go to Traver, Traver, your, your planning commission approved the, uh, community plan update for Traver. Well, because of the way that we set up the land uses there, this permit was, it was, there was no zone change required. They went straight to building permits. Therefore, the time crunch was a lot easier and they had that from the time they made the decision to go to the time they're open, it was about sixty-five days instead of what we had done in about four months, five months before, they did in a couple of months. So the community plans are very important to be able to really help spur economic development and growth because it really more by right uses in, in those communities, instead of having to go through the, the hurdles that they've had to in the past. Utility scale, our renewable energy sector, utility scale solar projects, all but, uh, all but a few megawatts are, that we've approved have, have gone online. Uh, they're online now. There's been over thirteen hundred jobs created during that time. We've worked closely with Proteus and a training program for the Solar Workforce Pathway Program. And that was early on, some of the first developers brought, um, solar panels and, and equipment into that training, donated about sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment to get that program up and running. And this program is not supplying just for Tulare County, but also for the whole Southern San Joaquin Valley. Proteus is providing a workforce for these solar projects. Like I said, the, they're almost all built with the exception of the Tulare Solar Center has about thirty-eight megawatts, forty megawatts still to go. And there's some megawatts that haven't gone live but are constructed on the DuCor once south of, uh, well, south of DuCor, north of Richgrove, that are built, but they're ready to, they're, they're about ready to go. What this looks like is what we've, what we've created thus far that's online is equivalent to almost seventy thou, the hundred percent use of, uh, seventy thousand homes is electricity used, the annual use. That's what's being generated out there. And that's not the industry, because I'm very conservative. You can see under the photo, um, well, it's, that's two hundred and forty-two houses per, per megawatt, per year is what that, that is. And that's very conservative. You'll see numbers where they say, oh, it's like eight hundred. Well, that's during the hours of operation. I'm talking, I'm accounting for nighttime and, and all of that. That, that's fully a hundred percent of, of the energy used for seventy thousand homes. So it's very significant. In our renewable energy sector too, what we're seeing now, what we're seeing is really the second wave of, of, of digesters. Digesters have been out there for a long time. But now we're looking at regional digester projects that, that cover lagoons and connect them via underground pipeline. And, and, and that's really the, the saving grace for the dairy industry, I believe. We've got, uh, one that's connecting seven, uh, in, into the Calgrin facility down in Pixie. That's, that's via underground pipeline again. There's a, um, a biodiesel plant, the Calgrin is, is doing as well on their, on their existing facility. Rather than trucking it all off, they're doing a little refining and it becomes a good product. There's three, well, there's, there's three individual digesters. But then we've also just met with a developer that's got two more clusters. And, uh, one of three dairies and one of four dairies. And those are not going to be creating electricity off of it. Those are going to be, the, the methane is going to be scrubbed and, and actually entered into Southern California gas companies' pipeline. So it's going to feed into the pipeline and create, uh, create capacity there.
Mike?
Yeah.
When we, uh, came up the Animal Confinement Act, you know, a lot of dairies wanted to, uh, you know, to combine their manure. And, uh, at the time, I don't think it was us, but some agency was, uh, the, uh, environmental reports. You, you couldn't haul manure from one dairy to another or to other location. And so in essence, you're doing this to make methane. So how did you accomplish that without a complicated environmental assessment?
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're capturing methane at the site, so there's no transportation of manure. That's maybe the older version, the older model was to get, uh, move, uh, manure to site. This is covered lagoons and it's, and it's a very low pressure, uh, piping between the two, connecting the different, um, dairies. So it's, uh.
But you're still mixing from one dairy to another dairy through a pipeline.
You're connecting, yeah, you're interconnecting.
You're saying you're just capturing.
You're capturing it onsite, so there's.
Methane and then pumping it to some other place.
Exactly. You're just, there'll be, if you could just envision three, say three covered lagoons, you know, quarter mile away from each other, a mile away from each other, with just the pipe, uh, connecting them, a pipeline.
But because of the economics in it, it never made any sense to me to restrict dairies from moving manure around. We, we do it through, uh, casting it into fields. So why couldn't we move it from place to place? Why can't the county look at some kind of environmental, so it's easier for them to move their manure around and compost it at multiple locations?
Well, I, again, that gets into the dairy, the, each, each dairy's use permit has nutrient for the spreading of, of the manure on their site.
Right.
This is, this is by far the easiest way to, to, to offset the, the methane greenhouse gas reduction that there is out there currently. So this is really standard, uh, as we go. That's, that's a little bit of a separate issue.
Reducing the carbon footprint and all that business, but, uh, I still think if there was easier to, they could move this more easily to other locations, there'd be more of a demand for manure. So, such as the, the plant that makes ethanol in Tipton, I think that's where it is, that Calgrin?
Pixie.
Pixie.
That's, that's who's going to be.
The stuff that comes out of there after it's been used up, uh, it, it looks like feed pellets. And, uh, they can't make enough of it, but it has an economy of to bag it and sell it for gardeners, for soil amendments and.
Yeah, and those, and those independent digesters would be similar to that. The, uh, but what we're, the, the, the covered lagoon is actually feeding, uh, the, the Calgrin facility. That digester that's hooked up currently at Calgrin, they're, they're actually pumping almost like a, basically a sewer system. They're pumping the manure under, through a sewer system pipeline, processing it and then putting it back, sending it, the, the liquid back to the dairy's lagoon there. And that's processing that. That's only supplying a, barely over five percent of Calgrin's need for, uh, for the gas because of the process for the ethanol plant. This is going to up their capacity because this is going to feed in and about, I think this gets them over twenty-five or thirty percent of their, their need will be addressed via these covered lagoons.
They're using the gas there to generate steam, so, uh, it's, um, different than making electricity, I think, so.
Well, yeah.
I still think that if there was an easier way that, so there's an economy and more volume, um, there should be an easier way. So I understand each dairy has to stand on its own, but, okay, thank you.
I can throw the chair if I may. Uh, if you recall, you had also approved an environmental impact report for, for, pick the biogases, we call it, Calgrin. What this does is as it captures that biogas and it's all sent to the main transmission line, it supplements the gas that they're producing right now through their own dairy process. And, uh, and another component of that is they're going to put, like Mike said, the scrubber, combine the gases, which will then go to the turbines, and that'll increase it to about twenty-five percent of the need that they have. So that's a big energy saver. But the beauty of the EIR is that all we had to do is go in and, and, and a supplemental document to say it's already in place. All they're doing is putting a new fuel source to it. That's going to plug it from this pipe to their pipe and then into the plant and they're going to, they're just capturing the, the methane biogas. That's all they're doing. You know, they're, they're not transporting the sewer or whatever. And that's I think what all the projects are doing. They're basically capturing gas. And some's going to Pixie Biogas, the others are going to go directly to SoCal Gas.
I still think it's way too complicated a process, but I don't think it's our doing. I think it's the state of California, so. That's easy to blame on, huh?
Yeah, it's their fault.
Well, one thing too, you know, from our little tour on Saturday, I understand we're at the biggest dairy in Tulare County. And, um, I wonder, you know, and this came to mind because of what we saw at Dry Creek also. We saw a really outstanding example of restoration after the industry leaves. Well, what do you do with the landscape? Well, the dairy guy in, uh, that we visited was very impressive. And I asked him, you know, wh- what's the future of your facility here? What's going to happen here? And he told me, and this was kind of shocking to me because I didn't expect this answer. But he said dairy in Tulare County and probably the state of California is over. And it's on the downhill slide. And by the time he retires, all the dairies pretty much will move elsewhere. Now, I don't know if he's, you know, why he had to say that because that's the best dairy. dairy I've ever seen. And it looked like they were doing it in the most efficient way you could possibly do it to maximize the profit. But my point is, after these dairies leave, they're going to leave at some point because the demand is shrinking for dairy in the U.S. So, what happens to this land after a dairy is operated there? Do we have any plans for that?
Yeah, dairies are converted. Oftentimes you see that on the perimeter of cities where dairies once were, now there's cities have expanded. They go through a, a reclamation process to be appropriate for, say, if, if they're on a urban fringe and, and residential uses are coming in, they, they're, they get reclaimed. There's, there's, there's processes for reclaiming the land. We don't, most, as we go forward with new projects, those would be things that we look at. Most of our dairy industry are grandfathered, they've been here forever, so they don't necessarily have like a some more financial assurance sitting there to do that, so.
That's something we might want to look into.
Well, John, what are you talking about reclaim the dairy?
Well, not reclaim it, but, okay, let's say the dairy closes.
Right.
What are, what is the responsibility of the dairyman to put the land back or to just leave it like that, or?
You mean where the, the footprint on the facility, because the land's not damaged at all.
Well-
In fact, it's better now than when he found it.
Even the ones that aren't digesting the manure and all that?
Oh, yeah, the land's better now than when he found it, seriously. Yeah. In fact, that's-
Well, that was the case of the dairy we were on.
Almost all, all of them, John, the, the dairy industry has put up so much amendments and so much manure on this ground that now it'll grow just about anything, but it wasn't, but thirty, forty years ago, a lot of that ground wouldn't grow a tree.
Well, if that's the case, maybe the task will be simpler.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's, it, it really isn't an issue. And as far as the facilities, they're made out of recyclable materials.
Yeah.
They just tear them down, recycle them, and put trees in them.
Yeah.
But e- but even our, our ponding basins, I, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we build way larger ponding basins we need because they're getting better and better about dealing with effluent that comes from, where they wash the cows down, so.
Yeah.
But the Business Journal had an article saying that the decline in dairy, there's a decline in the number of dairy cows, you probably know better than I, in Tulare County, so it's declining.
Well, there's number, the number of dairies is declining. The cow numbers isn't going down very much.
That's what they said in the Business Journal, but I don't, I have nothing to base it on, so.
That's another story.
It wasn't a member in industry, but keep going, Mike.
Sorry, Mike. We kind of took over your presentation.
Well, I just, the final thing on dairies, I, I just say that, um, there's, there's, in the last year, fifteen dairies have installed large-scale solar facilities. So, that makes it that forty-four dairies since two, May of two thousand and fifteen, so in the last two years, forty-four dairies have installed solar. And they average one megawatt per, per site. So, literally about forty, about forty-five million, or forty-five megawatts of solar production have been installed on, on the local dairy. So, they're, they're continuing to invest in, in the dairies. Again, like you mentioned, herd size, there's been some consolidation, herd size hasn't really reduced, but there has been a, the number, overall number of dairies have, have reduced. Also in the ag, agribusiness sector, Sundell Vineyards just recently completed a six-million-dollar expansion, and they've just submitted building permits for another four-and-a-half million-dollar expansion of its cold storage facility. Seton Farm continues to, to expand. I, I made the reference, I am sure everybody's aware of Winchester House up in, in San Jose, where she continually built, it seems like Seton Pistachio is continually expanding. They're, they're in, in, in the preliminary stages of grading and, and getting the civil work done for, for a sixty thousand square foot warehouse. They've just finished six new silos, it seems like every year they're adding more, more silos. Pittman Farms is expanding, they're creating, building some state-of-the-art poultry barns that at full buildout, this will probably take three or four years, it'll really increase the, the poultry production capacity in Tulare County by about thirty percent once all of these are built out. Their existing facilities are taking some, they're building some new ones and they're, and they're tearing down some older barns and, and putting these state-of-the-art with better ventilation, better, just, again, state-of-the-art. And that's fifteen million dollar investment there. Foster Farms is, is just about completed their organic feed mill up in Traver. That is another fifteen million dollar project, and they're looking at a couple of other expansion projects up, up at that site as well. In our industrial sector, SNS Metal Fabrication came in for a use permit before your planning commission a few months ago. They've just pulled the building permit for that. They demoed a, an existing ag site that was, it's just south of Kingsburg, and, and it'd been an eyesore and neighbors have been complaining and it'd been a code violation issue for a number of years. They've leveled that building and they're, they're building a, a new facility there. They'll bring fifteen new jobs to, to the county. The, the staff's mechanical heating and air conditioning, that was another one that was, that your planning commission did a special use permit for, just north of Tulare, on the, the north side of Tulare, they've completed their building. And, and currently I saw on their Facebook that they're in the midst of hiring more people too. So, that's another good job. Streamline irrigation up, outside of Traver, they've, we, that was one of the first companies that the Economic Development Office worked with. It was a, a family-owned business, a husband and wife, and they had four employees back in two thousand and twelve when we started meeting with them. And they were subletting a portion of, of a, of a warehouse and creating their business out of that, and they wanted to grow. We worked with them closely and, and now this year, they've, they, they built the plans, your planning commission approved their use permit, and we had about three phases built into it. Said, when you come before here, you, you want to put out everything that you hope to, make it phased, so that way, when you get there, if you're ready to go, you just have to get building permits for the, for the next building. And at their grand opening in two thousand and fourteen, July of two thousand and fourteen, they are already submitting their building permits for their second phase at the grand opening of their first phase. So, as it sits now, they've, they've grown from the four employees to forty-nine full-time employees and additional hundred-and-twenty seasonal workers. And if you go past there, I think it's three eighty, I think it's avenue three eighty-six, I believe. They're, they're, they're fantastic. They hit two with the drought because this is a water conservation, streamlined irrigation, drip irrigation types of things they're putting in the fields, and you'll see their signs on, on fields all over. The commercial sector, Dollar Generals, as you know, we've got Pixley Poplar, Strathmore, Farmersville, Tipton. We're under construction in Orosee, there's soon to be one in East Porterville. Chevron Gas Station is expanding part of the, the widening of the sixty-five, Highway sixty-five south of Porterville. They're expanding their facilities in conjunction with that road widening. Early Mart's, McDonald's, et cetera, we're working with a grocery store in, in Early Mart that we should hopefully have before you, before too long. So, there's a number of, a number of good things going on on the, on the commercial side as well. Community parks, we're working on the Early, Early Mart Neighborhood Park Improvement Project. The board just authorized a couple of weeks ago to submit an application on behalf of the Cutler-Orosee School District for a regional sport, uh, sports park, which you can see the, the design there, number of baseball, softball fields and soccer fields. We'll, we'll know later in the year whether we're, we're awarded that or not. Number of other park projects, infrastructure projects, the East Porterville Water System, Oakville wa, uh, putting a well in Oakville, Munson, Yedemseville, so there's a number of improvements there going on as well. Housing, self-help is, your planning commission approved the, the final site plan for a hundred-and-twenty-six units in Goshen. There's a thirty-six, uh, single-family lots that they're wanting to build now in Orosee. You approved the housing development for the twenty-seven single-family units in East Porterville for the Tulie River Tribal Authority, Housing Authority. There's a proposal for a hundred-and-eighty-five lot subdivision adjacent to Kingsburg on the county side that we're going through some preliminary work with that. Your planning commission last meeting approved a, a setback variation for a thirty-lot subdivision in Pixley, and so hopefully we'll be looking towards getting some of those built. And then the telecommunication, you heard testimony before about it, you had last, last time, the, the AT&amp;T rollout of the broadband throughout the county. And this is one of the, the things that we're looking at, the strategy is really by allowing more things by right and, and, and planning ahead, so we're not having to go through the costly, time, uh, time-consuming special use permits, trying to get more things developed in our, uh, urban development boundaries and more things by right. And you can see over the last few years, the number of full special use permits have, has gone down significantly while building permits and activity continues to climb. So, that's one that our CIO really likes this chart. And then tourism, obviously we're focusing on the, the mountains that we have here that, that's unique to our county. The County Economic Development Corporation ended its tourism-related promotions back in two thousand and eleven, and the Sequoia Tourism Council was formed after that and, and really promotes that, and the county has input on that and, and contributes to that effort. And again, the film, film activity is, is the, we're a little bit easier to film, a little, by a little, I mean a lot, easier to film in Tulare County to get some of those high Sierra types of views and settings with the big redwoods and, and stuff in our Bosch Park. So, we work with filmmakers and, and, and music videos and commercials and things like that. So, what that does is, it creates, again, it kind of acts in tourism as well, getting people up here, getting Tulare County known. And, and then the offshoot of that is we get some, some hotel stays when film crews are up here, we get restaurants. Sometimes if there's a, more of a major production, there might be some set design and stuff, so local contractors can get in that. So, that's really our focus on our, our film commission. And this has just been all a team-based collaboration between all of, all of RMA through Public Works, the fiscal and the economic development branch. And I think that's about it. So, if you have any questions, I, you know, I'm, I'm always available, I can answer now, you can always pick up the phone. But that was just kind of an overview of what, of what we're doing with Economic Development Office.
I'd like to generally commend our staff because Mike Washam and staff, they are available, and unlike other municipalities I deal with, and I really appreciate that, so you guys do a good job.
No, and I have to second that because if you notice, we were here back in twenty-twelve when they were, had seventy plan, uh, use permits, and we had to hear every stink in one of them. So.
Well, I also think on the, the cell towers that we recently did, you know, that one was begging for some aesthetics, the one in Elderwood, and lo and behold, it materialized, so thank you guys for that, however we made that happen. Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll move on to the consent calendar. I had one question on B, and maybe it was in the packet and I didn't see it, but is there, what, what's going on that's holding up the monitoring, mon, monitoring on the best transfer side? Does somebody have some insight on that?
Uh, through the chair, there's really no holding up as far as the monitoring. We have actually gone out there and monitored. It's fairly well-described in the agenda item and in the response from staff to all the conditions as they are in compliance.
Okay. Well, everything was okay on that one?
Everything is okay on that one.
Okay. Through the chair, just one clarification on, on consent item A, the, the extension of time. There is a reference on page three of the, of the draft resolution referring to the Tulare County subdivision ordinance, it's actually government code, should read government code.
Okay, if we have no other questions on that, I guess we can ask for a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent calendar.
Second?
I second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Batigleya?
Yes.
Agil.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into item six now, our public hearings. And the first one is item A, special use permit number PSP seventeen dash zero-one-seven, and that's James D. and Purdy Tanner. It's a statutory exemption and special use permit to allow establishment and operation of a large home, family daycare facility for seven to fourteen in Porterville. And we have Mr. Pacheco as our presenter.
Good morning. My name's Xander Pacheco, I'm with the Tulare County RMA Planning Division, Planner Three, project planner on this project. Good morning Chairman, Commissioner and fellow commissioners. Now, today we're here to discuss the large daycare facility. Normally Tulare County, under ordinance number three-two-two-two, allows a large daycare facility in any zone that's residential, home occupied, for twelve children. The applicant has filed a minor deviation, PZV seventeen dash zero-zero-three, for the additional two children to allow a fourteen maximum number daycare facility. And that minor deviation was approved on the eighteenth of April, two thousand and seventeen, and it's waiting to be recorded if this project is approved. Okay. The site is located on East, East Porterville on Olive Avenue, and it intersects at the corner there of Connerd and Olive, and it's a southwest corner. And the site is within the East Porterville Urban Development Boundary. As you can see here, people within three hundred feet were notified on the twenty-fifth of April by mail. It was posted in the Visada Times Delta on the twenty-seventh of April, two thousand and seventeen, so everybody was notified. This is an aerial view that shows the facility and the surrounding areas. Granite Hills High School is down the road to the east of the site. The area out there is developed and residential, and there are vacant areas also out there. The zoning on the property is RAM, which is Rural Residential Zone, and it's RA, Rural Residential, M, Special Mobile Homes, so they're allowed to have mobile homes out in the area. The site is three-point-eight-one acres, and it has a facility of a house, excuse me, it has three houses on the property. The owner lives in the rear house, which is to the south. The house that's shaded is the proposed daycare facility. The small house in the front is a proposed office that where two employees may work there, three, two to three employees may work in the daycare facility for fourteen children. And the area has parking along these east and west side of the driveway there. This is the site of the house itself, and they plan on utilizing the entire house. Now, the house itself will be regulated by the state of California, and they will determine the square footage for the number of children, they need to get their license from the state of California. The state of California will authorize anything within the house. At this point, we are only authorizing the use of the facility at that location, nothing more. As you can see here, this is a small house in the front, which is a proposed office area where one to two employees shall work. The house in the rear is going to be the proposed daycare center where three, two to three employees will work, which will have fourteen children maximum. This is the driveway. There will be parking on the left side, which is the east side, and also on the right side, which is the west side, under the trees or along the driveway. Now, if you can look, you can see that the driveway goes in one direction, it loops and then goes back, so there's no backing out onto Olive Avenue. This is the rear of the property, right there where the daycare facility will be taking place. There will be no parking within the rear yard. The gate right there that you see at the bottom of the slide, that's where they can drop off or walk into, but there will not be any parking inside the compound or the facility that house, where the proposed daycare facility will take place. They do have ramps there for handicapped children, they have a porch, and they have the entryways. The site itself is not in any endangered species area identified. There is mitigation there for the kit fox, however, with the development of the property and the surrounding areas, it's very unlikely that any endangered species will be found. The recommendation is to approve the statutory exemption, section one-five-two-seven-four pertaining to the establishment and operation of a large daycare facility, which is providing up to fourteen children as defined in section one-five-nine-six-point-seven-eight of the Health and Safety Codes, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP zero-one-seven for fourteen children. The alternatives would be to move it back, approve it, deny it, or refer back to staff for further, a report and study. And that would conclude staff's report.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any comments before we go to the public?
I just had a question. The Porterville had some comments about them si, uh, hooking up to the, the Porterville, uh-
Yeah, citywide.
Water.
Yes, the city has its own well- Yes, the city has its own well.
Looked through the conditions of approval, and I didn't see any of that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Diaz. Now, the hooking up to the water is voluntary, it's not mandatory with the city of Porterville at this time. The applicants chose not to hook up with their water system. They do have Portavista Sewer, but they do not have community water because they have their own well on site at this point in time.
To...
It's not mandatory to hook up to the water system just because they want it, it's...
To the chair, just to really simplify this, all the city wanted us to do was to note to the applicant that they could hook up to the water system, and that was available to them. So we did tell the applicant they could do that, that's all the city wanted.
Do we know the quality of the water there? I mean, have there, has there been a test or anything?
They'll, they'll need to get a state license for the water, for the, for this as well, just as they do for the daycare itself. They'll have to go through the state for a transit line, community, public water system, and they'll have to go through that permitting and that, too. That may, if, I don't know the condition of the water, that may lead them to having to, if they want to move forward, connect to the city water, city water system.
The biotics and the water tables forty to fifty feet, is that right?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yes.
This is, I think the water problem over there is south, a little more southeast, where there's no water, right?
That's correct.
Below Robey, Robey. But this is not one of those areas.
This is farther east and north.
Yeah.
Is there not funding available now for them over there on East Porterville to get hooked up, I think, or is that a different, different area?
I don't, I do not know, I would assume this might be in Phase Two of that project. I'm not certain, and I'm not certain one hundred percent whether this is covered under there, however, since the city indicated their willingness or wanted to let them know that they could hook up, I'm sure it's part of Phase Two of that water system.
Sounds like the state licensing, I'll catch this if there is an opportunity.
Can we leave the door open?
The door is open, I mean, it's not, it's not required, but they're required to get the state through the State Water Resources Control Board, they need a state water system, and if they can't meet that, then obviously the other option would be to hook up to the city.
Okay.
Andrew, what was the square footage on the residence, you know? I don't think I saw it in here. Because it's a large home.
I did have that, sir. I think it might have been eighteen hundred square feet or so, if my memory serves me correct.
Eighteen, okay.
Excuse me, Andrew. It says here from the Tulare County Fire Department that a large family daycare with the building is not occupied as residence would be required. I don't know why they put that in there, because doesn't it say in the report that they are going to use this as their residence?
Yes.
Okay. So that's...
...the facility that they're going to be using. If it does change, the Building Department will have to get a change of occupancy permit for this location, should that be the thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I did speak to the Building Department, they said change of occupancy would be required should it happen that way.
Okay.
If there's no further questions, this is a public hearing, so is the applicant or anyone want to speak on this project, make a statement?
The applicant is here. Give him a moment, it takes a little while if you'd like.
Okay, we'll use this microphone over here on your left. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Prudy Tanner, and our address is thirteen ninety-three East Olive Avenue, Porterville. And we are the owners, my husband, James, and myself, of the property. We have been involved in childcare for a long time. I worked at Porterville College as the coordinator of the Child Development Department there for thirty-two years, retired, and we founded an eight, a five oh one C three nonprofit called Family Focus. In Porterville, we have a site out at South Kessing, and we are currently at that site going to the city water. But on the one where we live, we're planning just childcare and to keep our well right now, it's plenty deep.
Excuse me, Ms. Tanner, could you pull that microphone down right in front of you a little bit more? There you go, try that.
Okay. That better?
Yes.
Is there anything I can answer for you, or...
Well, it sounds like if you've done this for thirty-some years, you've seen it all, so you're probably bringing a pretty good service to that, aren't you?
We believe in children and helping them enter school with a head start, we really think that's important, and so that's where we want to direct our focus on that.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else want to speak, yea or nay, on this special use permit? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I guess just summarize our options, which we know what they are. Okay, Andrew, you want to just go quickly? I know we can move to approve, move to deny, is there anything else?
Yeah, also, one more thing, there have been no phone calls or correspondence opposing the prop, proposed project. So at this time, that's, that's it.
All right, well, thank you for that, and at this time, if there's no further discussion on the commission, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a statutory exemption, State Secua Guidelines, Section one five two seven four, pertaining to establishment or operation of a large home family daycare facility, which provides in-home care up to fourteen children as defined in Section one five nine six dot seven eight of the Health and Safety Code, and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP one seven dash zero one seven.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilera?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is also a public hearing, and it's a special use permit number PSP seventeen dash zero one eight, and this is Dave and Cindy Regir, categorical exemption and special use permit to allow assemblage of people for educational entertainment purposes, like weddings, on a twenty-four thousand plus or minus square foot portion of a thirty-six point five acre site comprised of three parcels in the AE forty. The site is located on the south side of Avenue four hundred, approximately six hundred feet east of Road fifty-six, inside the hamlet development boundary of the Delph Colony, and our contact is Dana.
Good morning, Chairman Elliot, Commissioners. As mentioned, this is a request for an assemblage of people, primarily weddings. The project is categorically exempt from Secua, according to Section one five three zero one, Class One, pertaining to existing facilities, and the use of this section is appropriate because no new development is proposed for this site. Entitlement is found in Section sixteen five, which allows assemblages of people for educational and or entertainment purposes in the AE forty zone upon approval of a special use permit, and the minimum size for a parcel in this zone is forty acres. There is minimum criteria for approval of the assemblage of people. The first is general plan consistency, and the proposal is mixed use, land use, and this proposal is consistent with that designation. The second criteria is minimum acreage requirement, and there was a variance that was approved, a minor deviation, who allow a decrease in the acreage by ten percent for this site.
For clarification, the, the minor deviation for the four, it's a thirty, what is it?
Thirty-six and a half acres.
Thirty-six and a half acre lot. I've found that there's, there's findings that will qualify for that. I haven't signed that, I'm waiting for your commission to approve the project, and then I'll sign that concurrent this afternoon, as soon as I get back.
But they'll get recorded together. The third criteria is that it must be compatible with neighboring land use, and the surrounding properties are zoned AE forty and RAM, and the residential hamlet development boundary, or the development beneath them, is over, you know, six hundred and fifty feet away, and there haven't been any complaints from them. The fourth criteria is access be adequate, and this site has direct access to Avenue four hundred, which is a State Route two oh one, and Caltrans received an early consultation notice and provided staff with comments and conditions of approval. And the final criteria is that it not be detrimental to the general welfare, and it, the project has been conditioned to preclude the proposed special events venue from being detrimental to the surrounding properties and the community. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff did receive correspondence regarding this project from one of the neighbors, and this neighbor lives right here. Planning staff met with the applicant and the neighbor to discuss their concerns about the project, and the applicants have agreed to, first off, utilize the westernmost driveway for access to the project area and improve signage in order to direct the event attendees to the correct entrance. This change should eliminate traffic turnarounds on and near the Heinrichs' property, which was occurring frequently, apparently. And they also agreed, it was agreed by both parties, that the Regirs would be allowed to continue events until eleven PM if the vibrations resulting from the amplified noise can be reduced to an acceptable level, and if not, the amplified sound would be turned off at ten o'clock PM. And the applicants and the neighbor, they do speak with each other, they text each other, and so they're very responsive to their needs.
Well, it's just at the Heinrichs' discretion, it sounds like to me, is that right?
Kind of, and they're, yes, and we're trying to eliminate, or at least reduce, the amplified vibrations, is what it is.
Yeah, through the chair, when we met with the applicant and the neighbor, there's, they've, the applicants are, are very concerned with, with keeping being good neighbors and whatnot. They've actually developed a bandstand, they've built some, to try to, try to direct the noise and that, so it's a, it's a kind of an ongoing process, because if, they have to find the right angle, the right fit to make it work perfectly, and so that's why there's this ongoing piece, that, that if they, if they get it where it's refined, good enough, eleven o'clock's fine, if not, then they've agreed to do ten o'clock. So that's kind of where we're at. It's going to be a, kind of a test and, and kind of go as, as these events start up, and to see where, where that ultimately goes. And it's not necessarily the noise, it's, it's the bass, it's the vibration, so there can be potential alterations on their mixing board potentially that might solve that problem as well. So there, it's an older home across the street that has, so it's feeling that vibration in, in some of the older windows, and that's really what the concern is.
And also to the chair, this is, it's only experienced by this neighbor across the street, the other neighbors do not experience that, that the same type of impact.
I noticed there were several letters in favor, huh?
Right.
We received a couple of phone calls late yesterday from the neighbor that lives right here, directly across the street, and she was in full support of the proposal. Mrs. Armstrong. The project is located in the hamlet development boundary for the Delph Colony, and the land use is mixed use, as already mentioned, and the project was found to be consistent with the applicable general plan policies. Here's the vicinity map, and it's located on the south side of Avenue four hundred, approximately six hundred feet east of Road fifty-six. This is the zoning. AE forty contains a single-family residence, barn, pool, the event facility, outdoor restrooms, and the twenty-six acre parcel over here is agriculture. This is...
That's, that's what I was going to ask, what is that? What is the agriculture?
Orchard.
So it's kind of like a barrier, it causes a barrier for the noise, okay. My other question, I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe the applicant, I see that they have been having events here, so how long have they been having these events?
I think two years.
Oh, so it's, it's pretty tried and true, I mean...
Yes.
Their neighbors know how, okay.
So this would be to bring them into compliance with the permit?
It will, yes. There is a violation on the property for the assemblages without a use permit. The facility would operate during the spring and fall months only. Condition of approval would restrict the noise to between ten AM and eleven PM, and the maximum number of events would be twelve. As mentioned, well, the applicant owns two of these three parcels, and a lease agreement was submitted for the twenty-six acre parcel that's under agriculture in order to qualify for the minimum acreage. The applicant also submitted letters in support of the project. The clients hire their own vendors, food is prepared off-site by caterers that's brought in, and the same applies to beverages. The, let's see, the event itself would typically begin about five PM and conclude by eleven PM, and then cleanup is completed around midnight. And the applicants also use a calibrated sound level meter to monitor noise levels throughout the events, and there is sufficient onsite parking for the events as well.
I didn't hear, who provide security for that?
They are required to hire professional security for these events, that is, in the assemblage of people ordinance.
People that are, that are renting the place, right? I mean...
Yes, yes. I don't know how the agreement works, whether it's the people who rent the facility or the applicants, but there would have to be professional security. I think it's one for one hundred people, two if there's alcohol, something like that. Staff is recommending that you approve the categorical exemption and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP seventeen dash zero one eight.
Did you say it would only operate during the spring or primarily in the spring?
Primarily spring and fall. Are you testing me again?
Like, no, I just, I really go only operating in the spring, it didn't make a lot of sense.
Stop, Dana, I like the calling.
On your toes.
Okay, if there's no other comments...
Let me hear the recording, I think you did say that.
From the commission. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone that would like to speak or make a statement on this special use?
The applicants are here, but I guess they prefer not to speak, they're shy.
It's okay, I, I got the idea, so...
Well, you know, and I, I just wanted to make a comment, too, if you are already monitoring the sound with your own meter, that's fairly impressive, because I know a lot of times we have to tell people to do that and teach them how to do it, so, anyway. Okay, we can close the public hearing in that case. And is there any other comments, or...
No, I would like to go ahead and make a motion...
Yeah, we'll honor that.
...to approve the categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Secua Guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act of nineteen seventy as amended pursuant to Section one five three oh one, Class One, pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP one seven dash zero one eight.
Didn't we have a change of one of the conditions to...
Yes, we did add a condition.
Yeah.
With the added change of conditions.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes. Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilera?
Yes.
Okay, that's, motion's passed.
Okay, so at this time, we are going to move on then to the Director's Report.
Thank you, I, I just, I'll leave the Economic Development Update basically as, as my Director's Report, but I'd just like to announce that the Board yesterday appointed Reedchenky as, as RMA Director, so that's official now, and...
Who? That guy just got here. That guy just got here.
Well...
I didn't hear what you said.
Reed, Reed Shanky, from...
Reed?
Yes, Reed.
Yeah, he was here for a while.
He was here for a while.
Reed Shanky.
What's the last name?
Shanky.
Shanky.
He pronounces it, spelled Shanky.
Was he here? I never saw him.
No, he's been here before.
That's the only one.
He used to give us our road report.
Oh, okay. He's a fast riser.
Shooting star.
Yeah, shooting star, there you go.
Um, we, the road report, we have a lot of...
Oh, Reed.
...days, we have several projects. Um, we have the Earlmark Park project going on the south side of the county. Um, we have fifty-seven intersection project, which, doing a lot of intersection improvements, so if you guys drive through, I, I can't tell you guys all the intersections, but if you guys need intersection improvement, that's one big project that we have, it's over a million dollars. And we have our signal project.
My God, here he is.
Orange Belt and one ninety-six is a project there. But our main project that we have is four sixteen, you guys have been out to the Denim Area, the, the, the county just completed a portion, the widening, the widening project, and we taking the opportunity to work with them to write a proper transition, right there at Mid Avenue. And our contractor is, we're very fortunate, we have a great contractor, he's pushing his project along, and we're hoping to at least complete the widening area all the way to the King River, from, from the city, from the county line to the King River. That is our focus in the next couple of weeks. And we have the utilities that are being located east of the, east of the, the King River Bridge, and we're hoping to move forward this summer, so that's...
Good. This question doesn't have to do with the county, but what's Caltrans doing in the middle of the freeway here on, on one ninety-eight downtown? And they putting an irrigation system, or they've been, for the last week or two, they've been digging that thing up?
Yeah, they're putting, uh, those metal barriers.
I thought they were doing that, too, but...
No, one ninety-eight, down in the bottom, down in the...
Yeah. Are they putting the center divi, uh, barriers in the middle?
No, I think so. Some drilling holes.
Or the subway's gone.
Yeah, it could be. I thought they were putting irrigation.
We, we, we can inquire for now.
Yeah, let's find out.
Got rid of the old enders also.
I have a question on the, our historic, now historic Whitewater rafting ordinance. I saw in the monthly summary that seven permits has been in the past, those have been approved.
Right.
I have a question, though, is, this is going to be a historic year, so we're already seeing lots of rafts now, and why does Kewee Whitewater have three permits, and how does that work exactly?
You know, I, I, there's three separate entities. I, I believe that there's three all under the one umbrella.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. I know that last year we, we, because I believe we have eight available.
Yeah.
That means there's still one that's empty, so there's nobody in line wanting that other one anyway.
Well, the reason I ask that is there is a firm, and I believe this, this is one of these under the umbrella, but what happens is, is there's not, you know, we didn't get the, and this is an important year for it, that has the, you know, we didn't get the, the memo or the release that shows the emblems of the approved companies. And I think that's really important because, number one, I assume that if you have a permit, then you have insurance.
Absolutely. We go through, that, that's probably the long, the, the, the most time-consuming process of issuing these permits is going through risk management, making sure that they have improper...
Yeah, because you're going to need it this year. And also, if we don't have the emblems matched up to the rafts, we, I know we have rafts that are running right now, and I'm, you know, they could say they're not commercial trips, but I suspect that some of them are, so it'd be good to get that out, at least to three rivers, and let us know who actually has a logo or emblem on, that's supposed to be on the raft, because I don't see that on all the rafts.
I'll follow up with that as well.
Is that required, to have a logo on the raft?
To be honest, I, I do not know.
Well, it was originally, it was passed, that we could identify, and that's how, when you have a complaint on what they do, then you know who you're, you know, lodging the complaint against. Now, we, you know, during the drought, we did, it wasn't an issue. Now, all of a sudden, it's an issue again, because we have rafts all over town now. There's a lot of them coming in from outside the area also. So that's, would answer my question. I mean, I obviously have an article this week on it, so people are on the lookout. But it's an amazing boost to our little local economy, especially during our season until the school gets out. And we learned at the dam on Saturday that we're going to have a full lake all the way through the month of June and into the middle of July. That means the whitewater rafting season could go potentially, even on class three, all the way into August. So it's a pretty incredible season. I don't think we've had one like that. Something was similar in ninety-five, ninety-six, when we first did this, but there's, you know, people forget, you know, what it used to be like, and it's, it's already rumbling at night, it's in the three thousand range, so right now it's perfect for rafting, so we'll get a lot of traffic. Okay, any other comments for the, under the director's report? Okay, we can move on then. I think we want to, I, I know personally, I'd like to hear a little of the feedback of the commissioners that attended the conference, and also maybe some of the planning staff, too. Ed, you were the president, what would you have...
You know, I was, I'm very pleased with, with our content, with the quality of tours, and everybody was very professional. The only disappointment that I had was that it wasn't very, it wasn't attended.
Yeah. And we're going to, we already have a, an idea that Wayne presented to me, that we're going to work on that, but, you know, in the last few years, especially since two thousand eight, it's more and more coalesced down to the county that puts it on the most amount of people. The farther away you get from the county, the least people attend, although we had a couple of exceptions at this one. And, but it was a great opportunity to have county staff there with commissioners, and I think that's something we didn't have in the past. And by moving it to May, and we're going to keep it for next year at Redding, the same weekend, I think we're going to continue that and be able to more interact with the planners. One place, one presentation in the afternoon that was on the A B fifty-two business, you know, it was a little, it was a little difficult because of the speaker, who hadn't had a chance to really speak much in Tulare County. She kind of went over the time and, you know, presented a little bit of material that we weren't expecting, let's say. But one good thing really came out of that, well, a number of good things, but the, the need, because Shelley was there, and Shelley, you know, presented the cultural resource part. Shelley made this suggestion, I think, that we need, like, Twolome County's already done this, but Tulare County has not done this. We need to have kind of a planning powwow, where we have staff, tribal people, and consultants, some of the people that actually do the C R M, so that we can sit down and just come out with a policy, kind of like our protocol we have on C R M. Because when you notice a project, and we've got the clock ticking at sixty days, and we have to have them respond during that time, they're not used, our tribal representatives in our area that we contact, they're not like the ones we met in Riverside last year who have U C degrees, and they're right on this process. So we're kind of starting from square one here, and I think it would behoove us, you know, how to really get the process so people are more in tune, instead of ignoring our requests for comments, and we don't get anything. I think we'd be better that way.
Well, through the chair, we, we, we have met with them on, mostly project-specific, because that's, that's the way this process is set up. However, we look at that, as, as these meetings have, have developed and gone on, is we're looking for, trying to establish standardized protocols and things like that, to, to do that, to, to help make it more efficient. I know that some of the, some of the different representatives that are from the different areas have different opinions and things, so I know Tachi wants to try, they're, they're probably the best funded, and they have their own office, research office, so to speak, and they would like to reach out to some of the area tribes to create a centralized process that would be ideal, really, to be able to work with one that incorporates everything. And obviously, they, they need to go out for specifics on certain areas, but to try to create that, protocols and policies is, is what we really would like to establish, so.
Well, we, you know, Tulare County, I, I've really noticed this, I'm going out to all these other counties, that we do an incredible job, really, under most circumstances, and it seems like that maybe we could take the lead on this a little bit and kind of help the process, and it's, I mean, we don't owe it, it's not required, it's not part of the A B fifty-two, but I think it would go a long way. One of the opportunities we have is we have so much open space and things here that we really, I think, as Tulare County citizens and commissioners and staff, you know, we need to figure out what our significant areas are, you know, and just maybe designate a type here and there for preservation, something like that. We've certainly done it with other kinds of landscape and farming properties, and, and so I think we, being the lead agency, the county, it would behoove us to work with these folks and just kind of give them a helping hand on this, because they're not, they certainly don't and are not used to the planning process, unless it's a project that, you know, is on the reservation, or it's in the casino development or something like that. So anyway, it's my suggestion, I'd just like to see if we could maybe have a meeting in the back room here one day and, and just see if we can make this happen. It would save us a lot of problems in the future, if we're going to have any, so. But anyway, the conference was, you know, and, and like I said at the conference, this is my twelfth consecutive, and the content was as good as any. And there was something really, you know, you always take away a lot from a conference, and every single thing we did, there were takeaways. You know, John Austin's thing was over the top. I mean, there was, you couldn't even keep up with that guy. Like I told John Austin, I don't know how he closes his eyes at night, because he's got, you know, billions of years of natural history going through his head, but he was really good on the evolution of the basin and, and where the water went that was in Tulare Lake and, and that sort of thing. And then Dan Dooley provided such a rational, you know, calculated approach in how we can deal with water and sigma, it was, if we can, if we have any problems in sigma, that's the guy to call on, there's no doubt. And I think the thing that he said at the end, and it really struck me, was that Temperance Dam is a waste of money, and that it's kind of, there are a lot better solutions to go after. And, I mean, I could hear, you know, maybe Bobby Kamanski saying that, because Bobby Kamanski told me there are like sixteen endangered species in the area of Temperance Flat, so I could understand his perspective. But with Dooley telling me that, you know, I think that's really something that we maybe need to change the culture a little bit and our thinking on how we're going to come to terms of the future of water storage.
Well, John, can I comment on that?
Sure, you brought Dooley, so.
And, and, and he's probably right, and it's probably very expensive per acre foot of water for that storage here. But the other side of that is, by storing that water up there, we've got control of it.
Yeah.
Now, if we just let it go down to the basin and somebody else that has water rights, has control of it, or somebody that controls the pumps or something, we're just, we've got our hat in our hand, asking for this water.
That's a good point.
We've got it up on the hill there, we've got control of it, and it hasn't gotten by us yet, so that's, I guess that's my point.
Well, it's a really good point, and the thing is, it takes partners to make that project happen, and Fresno County's already told us they don't have their share. So it's problematic, to say the least, and I see good and bad in both approaches.
Well, you're also, excuse me, I just got to put this in, you're also, that's just one opinion. It's not like we had a, a panel, and they all gave their, that was one direct opinion. And the, the other thing that I just have to say is, his ideas were more based on groundwater.
Right.
And his ideas of what to do instead of that dam were all groundwater. It was great ways to keep our groundwater supplemented, but it's not doing anything to capture that water that's coming down out of the valley.
Right, well, and that's a very good point.
Through the chair, I just wanted to say, you know, staff did have a great time over this last weekend, it was really appreciated. I did think we did have real robust conversations that I think were very in-depth, and I do think that they were very tangential to everything we do in this, this county. So from a staff perspective, I, I thank you for the event. We do wish it was a little bit more well-attended, but your point is well-made, Commissioner, that staff was present and did see all the different types of project features that are being included to the different projects around the county that we could potentially use in the future, but thank you very much.
It was really cool.
And just to add to that, John, maybe you're on the board, the state board, maybe it should be, you know, still put out to the planning commissions, but maybe sent out to the county's staffs more so, not just one little quick blurb, okay, we have room, now you guys get to come.
Yeah.
Actually encourage.
Right, well, one thing, one thing that we have already dedicated ourselves, because of the guy from Redding, is very good, and he's going to be a, you know, tremendous leadership in getting the focus of the north, where actually going to, you know, target the counties where people can get there relatively easy in that area, and go and make presentations at their commissions and at their county offices to talk to their planning directors. And I think that that's, you know, this, it's nice to get an email and say, we've got a great show for you, you should come, but I think if we establish that relationship, and we have some continuity now with Dan, you know, being a, on the board for quite a bit, the guy from June Lake, and, you know, and our full commitment to this and support of this by Tulare County is just incredible, and it has been. But I think we can build on that for next year, we have a little more time, because we're done in May, we can go through this year and plot it out and really market this conference. Wayne's going to help us a little bit with that, and we're going to set up some kind of subcommittee on marketing. And it just, it just showed us all the great opportunities, and I was really proud that day, the things we experienced on the tour, especially of, of how beautiful and so much potential here in Tulare County, and, and seeing all the ag in various stages of production and, and, I mean, I wish we could have seen the mountains that day, but, because that's, it's so beautiful right now, I can't even believe it. But it was a wonderful opportunity for all of us. And then the crowning, the, by ending that with Amy at the dinner, oh my God, she is over the top, and it just, again, it just, let's give a pat on the back to Tulare County for having someone like Amy as a supervisor. I mean, we are definitely outside the box with her and her personality and her knowledge, and I really enjoyed having dinner with her, and I, I haven't laughed that hard at a planning commissioner's conference ever, and she was just a breath of fresh air, so. Anyway, I appreciate everybody that made the effort to be there, and it was a good time, and we're going to just build on this momentum now and, and see if we can get some more people to experience the same thing.
And just to end on that, John, I know Nancy submitted, but my wife Katie is doing the thank you notes, and she's all over me, and she wants to do this sooner and not later.
Right, I got one for brewbakers that I need to do.
So, so if you could email me all your, the names and addresses of all your sponsors, or anybody that contributed, we'd like to get them a thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And John, if you don't do it right away, you will get a call from Katie.
Yeah, I know. That's okay, I really like Katie.
She will end up on your doorstep.
No, that's really cool to have her.
Yeah, cute, I'm not going to respond to that.
Well, you know, the, the old adage, you know, behind every great man, there's even a greater woman.
That's right, that's right.
Boy, is it true in most of our cases, let me tell you.
In my life, sure.
Anyway, thank you all for coming, and I really thank the, the county for having the people there and supporting that, and it was just a win-win the whole weekend, and I tell you, it just blew me away, and I'm still, you know, I'm going to...
I'm from Tulare County, and all the great places we went to that I haven't been, it was great. I would have done that tour.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, that's what people were saying, why don't we do that tour, even if it's not a, a commissioner's meeting, but the...
It's a great tour.
Yeah, the thing, too, and, and this was the coup of the whole thing, was to take it from October and move it to May, it made a huge difference.
Oh, yes, okay.
And I think people's perception of Tulare County, now the ones that were from other counties and other areas, they're going to go back, and these are movers and shakers, one guy was an ex-supervisor, now he's a commissioner, and they're going to go back to their counties and tell them, let's do this again, let's keep plugged in. It was great, I appreciate it. So... So if anybody else wants to make a comment, I know Mel had a great time, and, would you go out dancing after the dinner?
No, we didn't, but I will say, I was really disappointed, I was disappointed, I can't speak for the entire planning division, but I was disappointed that Aaron did not climb that rock wall and ring that bell.
I do apologize for that. Next time.
He didn't have the right shoes.
Yeah. Well, we're, we can always go back to that place, and if you want to try it, Aaron, let me know, I'll go with you, and I'll give it a try too.
The commissioner as well, I will do that.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to make one comment regarding McDermit Fieldhouse, that's a wonderful facility right there, and they were very candid, saying that they were having a hard time making that thing cash flow, but they also mentioned to me that, you know, their gang activity had dropped way off.
Good point.
And there's gotta be some resources, some justification, because of less police work, less, less court expenses, less jail.
Didn't he tell us 70% drop in gangs?
Oh, it was incredible, there's gotta be some justification, maybe to subsidize this thing, to keep it float, because it's doing the community a huge benefit in other areas that are financial, tangible benefits on this thing.
Well, the county could take other kids there, you know, I mean.
Well, you know, I had mentioned it to Norma's son, and, and he said, let's go out there, let's, you know, so, so it could be just a little bit of promotion, you know.
Yeah, they promoted real heavy when they first opened, but it has kinda dropped, I'm sure it's because of financially.
Sure.
Well, it's like Pam made the point, it was really good, she said, you know, we got 15 to 20 million dollars to build the thing, okay, now how do we operate it and run it and keep it in the black, and what they're doing is certain parts of it, like the strength training and the gym part, you know, they have a contractor in there, I don't know what the deal is, but he's kinda running that part of it, and they brought other people in to do the laser tag, and, you know, things like that, so.
Very smart.
Yeah, and so that's what, they just need a little more development there, and maybe some continued support from the county, you know, to actually take boys and girls.
They have a dynamic, young man working there.
Yeah, he was good, he was very good.
Well, that's not a county issue, that's the city, Lindsay, is it not?
Yeah.
City, Lindsay's Incorporated, right?
Right, right.
The fellow that was behind all that, I kinda had an inside look, because I know Bill Sigler pretty well, was Dennis Townsend, who was the city manager. It was sort of a checker, unintended consequences.
Yeah, yeah.
He was a genius at writing grants.
Yeah.
Got all that money, and then he also, if you go out to the other facility where the swimming pool is, that's almost more incredible.
Yeah.
The Olympic swimming pool and health club, and then if you go to the high school.
Oh, the high school, it's been transformed.
Artificial turf on the high school field.
We're jealous of that.
And you go, where did all this come from? Came from Dennis Townsend.
And now Dennis is no longer there.
But he got run out of town on a rail because of some improprieties, and the unintended consequences.
That were beyond his control, probably.
But the goodness is, is that it's a great facility, it just needs a little more.
A little twerking.
You know, that reminds me though, and we brought the bike lane, which isn't completed, but it will be someday, let's hope, into Three Rivers, there were people saying the bike lane was an inappropriate use of funding, and I'm sure Lindsay heard a lot of that too, but the thing is, on the bike lane, I've been covering the newspaper during the whole time, there's, before the bike lane went in, there were fatal accidents along that area, because it wasn't systemized, and people were running into the rock walls. Now, we haven't had one single fatal since the bike lane went in, so that million dollars, even if not everyone rides bikes there, was well-used.
That just brought up a good point, and this is a county. Couple of weeks ago, my husband and I were going to drive up Rocky Hill and go out through Yocall, we couldn't, because there were so many walkers and bicyclers on it. I told him, I said, turn around, do not try to do this, and it was crazy. Is that like, all the time?
Through the chair, the, talking to Reed Shenkey about this issue, the county's very much aware, and we are trying to enforce not parking along a rocky ridge, and just making sure that this, we can't control that to some extent.
That's crazy.
You were talking about Rocky Hill, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I go out there a lot, and I know Crocker's on it too, because Crocker's taking his dog out there, and, you know, I mean, we've had actually a runner hit by a biker there.
Oh, yes.
And killed.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're, they gotta, they're gonna have to address that.
I don't know if it's like, put lanes in, or what?
But it's really used, and if you have a recreational resource like that, it, you know.
Yeah, but it's, it's a county road, I mean, it is a road.
Well, there's people from all over the county that come there too, it's not just Exeter or Three Rivers.
Oh, no, no, it's definitely, but it's pretty crazy out there.
It is, I go out there a lot. Okay, if there's nothing else to discuss, and looks like we have another meeting May 24th, we'll adjourn.